The October 19, 2023, Meeting of the Woodbridge Town Department of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Secretary is required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: On January 11, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Wolferman. Ms. Bourdain, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing the matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a second by, excuse me, I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, a second by Mr. Velez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carried. We'll retire to closed session. We'll be back as soon as possible. Please rise for a salute to the flag at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to consider republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, here. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. No bids were received.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Dr. Massimino, please introduce the student representative from Woodbridge High School, Julian Catalon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Julian Catalon is currently a senior at Woodbridge High School. Julian is an extremely involved member of the school community. Julian is an active member of the Social Justice Club, Academic Competition Club, Asian Pacific Islander Club, ROKA Honor Society, National French Honor Society, Tri-M Honor Society, and Freshman Mentor Club. Julian holds leadership as the current president of the Concert Choir, Show Choir, National Honor Society, and Drama Club. Outside of school, Julian is a member of New Jersey Young Democrats, High School Democrats of America, and New Jersey High School Democrats. In 2021, Julian had the honor to sit on Congressman Frank Cologne's Youth Advisory Council. Julian is currently ranked number two in the senior class. After high school, he would like to continue his studies in political science or government and history. Julian is diligently working on college applications and wishes to attend college in the Washington, D.C. area. Julian, welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Massimino, and thank you to the rest of the Board for allowing me to share these updates tonight. Starting with school one, the PTO sponsored a foam party. It also celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 through October 15. Respect Week activities were held from October 2 through October 6. At Avonel Streets, School 4 and 5, tender smiles for kids, teeth cleaning for students, was held on September 11, 12, and the 29th. Students engaged in various lessons during Hispanic Heritage Month. The Week of Respect activities were held from October 2 through October 6. Fire prevention assembly by the Avonel Fire Department was held on October 6. School Violence Awareness Week Assembly was held on October 18. At School 9, Hispanic Heritage Month will be celebrated from September 15 through October 15. The Week of Inclusion and Week of Respect activities were held from October 2 through October 6. There was a fire prevention assembly on October 12. There was also a school violence awareness assembly on October 26. At School 11, Hispanic Heritage Month was celebrated throughout September. There was a back-to-school night hosted on September 27. There were also Week of Inclusion activities held from October 2 through October 6. School Violence and Awareness Assembly with the Woodbridge Police Department was conducted on October 10. The school-wide pink-out was held on October 11 to support various cancer societies. At School 19, a PBSIS kickoff was held on September 27. We send our thank you to Mayor McCormick, Councilman Howie Bauer, Councilman Corey Spiller, Woodbridge Police Officers, and Mr. Ali for joining us to say hello to our students during Hello Week, September 18 through September 22. Students created Hispanic heritage art projects throughout the month. At School 25, the PBSIS program was kicked off with assemblies on September 11 and 12. An open house was held on September 12 as well. A ribbon-cutting ceremony took place in front of School 25 on October 5 with Mayor McCormick, Dr. Massimino, Assemblyman Coughlin, school administration, Board of Education members, students, staff, and PTO members. During the Week of Inclusion and Respect, students attended an Omega Man Assembly. Various items highlighting different Hispanic cultures were displayed for Hispanic Heritage Month. The Ford's Fire Department visited during Fire Prevention Week as well. At School 28, there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony to officially open the new wing on October 5. Mayor McCormick, Dr. Massimino, members of the Board of Education, town council members, NJSLA PTO, and Pace parents were in attendance as well. Week of Respect and Spirit Week was held on October 2 through October 6. School Violence Awareness presentation with Officer Harris was also held. There was a celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15 through October 15 with a variety of grade and age-appropriate activities. At Avonel Middle School, Hispanic Heritage Month activities were held from September 15 through October 15. A Week of Respect and Inclusion activities were also held from October 2 through October 6. A food drive to support the St. James Food Pantry is currently being held. It started on October 1 and is being held through October 31. Forty-five students were recognized for demonstrating Wildcat Way positive behavior. Mayor McCormick visited with classes who were working on a joint program that focused on citizenship. At Ford's Middle School, there was a PBSIS kickoff on September 29. Week of Respect and Week of Inclusion activities were held from October 2 through October 6. Hispanic Heritage Month activities were also completed. There was a HISPRA role model presentation for eighth-grade students on October 11. The first successful theatrical performance, Peter and the Princess, was held on September 22. School Violence Awareness Assembly was also held on October 3. Hispanic Heritage Month family dinner was hosted on October 12. A morning sports club was started on October 4. The Student Council is sponsoring a pink-out on October 27 with all profits going to Metaviver. The PTO is sponsoring a costume party on October 27. At Woodbridge Middle School, the Hispanic Heritage Month activities included an empanada sale and a flag activity. The first Google Classroom Genesis workshop for parents was on September 20. The first movie night was on October 5. A mental health workshop for parents was held on October 24. School Violence Awareness Week Assembly was on October 12 with the Woodbridge Police Department. At Woodbridge High School, the Save Our Strays Club hosted two in-person adoption events, raising over $1,000 for local rescue organizations and found homes for nearly 75 animals in foster care. The Drama Club winter one-act play, Our Town, is scheduled for January 9 at 6:30 p.m. The Spring Musical, Sweeney Todd, will hold their annual Broadway Night fundraiser on October 17 at 6:30 p.m. in Cafeteria 129. The Woodbridge High School choirs performed at the Township 9/11 Memorial Service, the Hispanic Heritage Festival, and also the Middlesex County Jazz Festival. The Winter Choir and Band Concert will be held at Woodbridge High School on December 13 at 6 p.m. The St. Andrews Concert Choir will be held on December 20 at 7 p.m. These are all of the updates I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catalon. You and I have known each other for several years, very proud of your success you've had, and pleased to see you're going into political science, and good luck, and good luck on those college applications. Hopefully you get into the schools you're looking to get into. And congrats to your parents, I guess your mom and your sister over there, I guess, right? Hi, how are you? And then also a shout out to Mr. Osborne, Principal of Woodbridge High School, for being here. Thank you very much. Julian, if, you're welcome to stay, but don't feel obliged if you have some homework duties, okay?
Thank you for the honor. I have to finish those college apps.
Okay, all right, very good. Good luck. All right. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of September 2023.
Thank you, Mr. President. I present the following monthly reports: Student Registers and File夹 Report, Suspension Reports for Elementary and Secondary Schools, Bomb Threat Reports, and Reports of the Attendance Officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed the opportunity to speak. Please join us at the microphone if you have something. Okay? Please state for the record your name and the section of the township you reside.
My name is Nasal Mohammed. I reside in Island Township. Thank you, Board members, for another meeting today. I do have one question. This is on the Item 6C, Finance and Insurance Agenda. So on there, Item 12 states that the Board of Education give the Business Administrator discretion based on the June 30, 2023, closing of the Financial Records approval for a transfer of $25 million to capital reserve. I think that's a great example of responsible budgeting and controlling spending. It seems like we're saving this money for a rainy day somewhere, so what my question is, is how do we plan on spending this additional $25 million?
All right.
That's sitting there.
Is that the conclusion of your question?
That's the conclusion of my question, and I also have a follow-up comment.
Okay, sure, if you want to give your follow-up comment.
Okay, so my follow-up comment, I want to extend a special thanks to Ms. Dareth Voorhees. Ms. Voorhees hosted the members of the Board of Education and the candidates for Board of Ed at the PTO President's Council, and this was last night, Wednesday, October 18. And I just wanted to thank her, thank the parents, and all the organizers for putting together that event. Thank you so much, Ms. Voorhees.
Okay.
That's the end of my comments and my question.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Item Number 12 on the Finance and Insurance Agenda, we spoke about this the other day with Mr. Wolferman, the committee. That's $25 million that was identified by our auditor as part of the annual audit that we're required to perform. It was such a great amount of money that the recommendation that that money be set aside in the capital reserve line, Mr. Wolferman can speak more to its use, but I think in general, we don't have a spending item on which to spend it on, but, Mr. Wolferman, could you correct me if I said anything wrong there?
Mr. Harris and Mr. Mohammed, yeah, the money is set aside in our capital reserve. It pertains to anything that's currently in our long-range facilities plan, so it's not earmarked at this time, but it can be used for anything that we have that's a long-range facility plan, which is an extensive book. We had an entire architectural firm go out and look through all our school district, you know, all the buildings in the school district, to determine what might be happening that needs immediate attention versus long-term attention, so it can be used for any of those items once we feel that that need is upon us.
Right, right. So, Mr. Wolferman, if a roof collapses or boiler breaks, we could transfer that money and pay for that? We've got that extra savings account, if you will, for a longer-term. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the agendas this evening?
Good evening, everybody. John Vertaric over here. I don't know if it goes with this agenda, but talking about Woodbridge Township School District Violence and vandalism report of 22, 2 or 23. My question would be with the violence, of course vandalism, and of course over here the substance abuse. At what point, and what can we do about it? I mean, we know, we tried everything and everything. We probably got more police now in schools. You got more about whatever it is. What's the cause of it? Is it starts from the home? I know kids do anything just to be important or something, they're tough guy or something like that, so this is a lot of stupid things that actually in the future they will hurt them wherever they go, especially if they get hired to be important jobs. And my daughter, I know what she does now. They went as far as check when she was a paper girl in Woodbridge. What kind of kid was she? So I think it's very, very kind of a negative and shame, because the kids are kids, we know that, but how do they, how can we kind of encourage them not to do stupid things like that? Because it's recorded, and in future, they might be, do what I do, cut hair maybe, but if they want to get a government job, important jobs, it's probably going to hurt them, because you make one mistake in your lifetime, you're out the ballpark. So that's my question, is anybody would kind of, what can the parents can do, what kind of anybody should do before they come to school? Because I know when much happens over here, you have to report it, and it's got to be in the books probably forever. I mean, it happens sometimes in the street, we ignore it. I know my kids, especially one of them, got quite a few fights in the street, but there was nothing during school, so got away with it. But what can we do as a society, not just the Woodbridge, to kind of help? And I know it's all kind of, you know, maybe it's even parents' fault or somebody's fault, but what could be done from anybody could know, would know, to kind of stop them from making those mistakes? So that's my question, you know? I don't know if any of them need to.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Vertaric. Is that the conclusion of your questions?
That's the question.
Okay. Dr. Massimino and I were speaking. That's on the superintendent's agenda, and he actually will be presenting the findings on that momentarily.
Thank you.
Dr. Massimino, did you want to add anything to that?
No, Mr. Vertaric, if it's okay with you, when I present a report, I'm happy to address your specific question.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yep, all right. Anybody else before we move on to the agendas? Seeing none? Okay. Dr. Massimino, please provide an overview of the graduation profile for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. In looking at the graduation profile for the previous school year, I'm pleased to announce over 98% of our students graduated high school. If you look at some of the breakdowns, you can see comprehensively, over 80% of our students are going to some sort of college, and there are a number of students entering the military. So the idea that the overwhelming majority of our students are graduating in high school and either going on to a two- or four-year college, technical school, vocational school, or the military, great to see. We'll keep striving for 100%, but we're very pleased with these numbers and hope to continue to improve on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Board members have any comments on that? Nope. Superintendent's agenda, Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations for us?
I do, Mr. Harris. Before I give those recommendations, though, I would like to address the annual district report of violence and vandalism.
Sure.
Everybody's taken a look at it. Obviously, there are always concerns when you see increases in certain areas, especially in areas of violence. You know, a lot of this is contributed to by peer conflicts, fights, things of that nature. It speaks to a lot of the work we're doing to address things like substance abuse. The legalization of marijuana obviously changed the accessibility for everyday people to get it. If everyday people can get it easier, then children and minors will be able to get it easier. That's generally how it goes. We have hired staff specifically with these types of concerns in mind. In addition to security officers, we have hired additional counselors at the middle school level. Last year and this year, we hired additional students, assistant counselors at the middle school level. We used to have two of them, shared between the five middle schools. Now every middle school has one, with the understanding they'll work with that middle school and the feeder elementary schools. We believe, you know, as a board and as a district, the earlier we can educate the students, the better off we'll be in trying to combat something like this. It is a global issue, it's a societal issue, but when it enters our schools, we want to try to provide whatever supports we can. So we continue to bring in programs. Just this year, we hired a, we created the position of Supervisor of Counseling Services. That supervisor works, you know, hand-in-hand with our Director of Special Services to really provide comprehensive training and overview for our staff to identify things such as substance abuse, and we're going to combat it the best way we can. Unfortunately, we, you know, we are fighting an uphill battle. The increased accessibility does make that challenging, but we're trying to put resources within the school to provide supports to both the students and subsequently their parents, if that assists. So that's our plan moving forward. I'm hoping to see the numbers that we had last year go down with some of these resources that we've implemented, and we'll continue to, you know, take suggestions from the community and work with our partners to improve things as we see fit. With regards to the agenda, I have 20 items to present to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, a second by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? I'm going to add just a couple of mine while Dr. Massimino was speaking and Mr. Vertaric had asked that question. I had thought of a couple of things to buttress Dr. Massimino's response. I did step away for about 10 seconds, so I may have missed this, but our district, when I started on the Board, we had three dedicated SAC counselors, Student Assistance Counselors. They sort of augment what school counselors do. School counselors largely help with scheduling, college admissions applications, things of that nature, as well as, you know, working with students on different mental or social issues. But our SAC counselors also, they're really dedicated to that type of work. Since then, we've added two to cover the middle schools, and then we've added three more where all five of our middle schools each have a dedicated SAC counselor. That was just this past budget year where we added those three additional SAC counselors where they could cover those schools. Dr. Massimino, you may have covered it there. Again, I did, my attention was diverted. When I started on the Board here, we had eight school counselors at the elementary school level. We've since added an additional eight where all elementary schools now have a dedicated guidance counselor, in no particular order of importance here. It may have been covered by Mr. Catalon, how we have a Week of Respect where we do all kinds of programming, teaching our students about respecting themselves, respecting each other, and respecting school property. We've got a great program of partnership with Woodbridge Township called the Heroes and Cool Kids Program. You may have heard of it, it's been talked about. Mayor's a big fan of it, Councilman Fakara is. It's a program where we have high school, middle school students that are sort of trained to go into the middle school or the elementary schools to talk to students about bullying and peer pressure and making the right decisions, sort of that peer-to-peer interaction. Adults speaking to kids is helpful, but kids talking to kids can't beat it, right? On the drug education program, when I started on the Board, we no longer had DARE. DARE had gone away. DARE is now back in the district probably about three, four years, provided free of charge from the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office. That's provided to all fifth-grade students. Then at the seventh-grade level, I remember we changed the Health and Physical Education curriculum to add in a program for seventh graders called We're Not Buying It, sort of an extra boost to the curriculum concerning drug education, resistance education, and so on. And last but not least, the only other thing that came to my mind, we have a program, it's a national program called the Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We have a chapter at Colonial High School where we have students who are high school students, big brothers, big sisters, who work as mentors to younger students at the other, I believe at Colonial Middle. I forget, I forget all the details of that. Yes?
Woodbridge Middle.
Woodbridge Middle, all right, and at Woodbridge Middle. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bourdain. So just wanted to buttress what Dr. Massimino said there in terms of the types of things we're doing to encourage positive behavior, positive actions, and, you know, being people of good character, and, you know, respecting themselves, respecting fellow students, respecting teachers, respecting school property. So thank you, Dr. Massimino, for covering that, providing a thorough answer to Mr. Vertaric. Is there anyone else want to add anything to the superintendent's agenda? Nope. Seeing none. I know I had a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, a second by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any, oh, we already did the comments and questions. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Before moving on, I meant to mention something tonight. As Vice President, I'm subbing in for Mr. Molnar. He cannot be here. He sends his regards. Next up, Policy and Planning Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, a second by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Sure, Ms. Bourdain.
If I may, on the last page of the Policy and Planning Part of the Agenda, you'll note that there was SATs and PSATs taken in the school on October 11. Unfortunately, they did have a technical issue where most of the students weren't able to take the PSATs. The makeup day is October 24 for the PSATs. I think the SATs were taken.
Yes, correct.
PSATs, for those who didn't take them, will be next, what is that, next Tuesday, October 24?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Bourdain, and that technical issue, I believe, was on the PSAT side of things, right? Those college boards, right?
Statewide, yeah.
Yeah, it was a statewide issue, right? Thank you. Oh, I have a comment from Mr. Passerino?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The issue was a nationwide.
Oh, nationwide.
So that was not New Jersey, that was a nationwide issue for the PSATs.
Right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Passerino, please provide an overview of the 2022-2023 NJSLA test results.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The spring 22-23 NJSLA test results primarily deal with the students who are in grades three through nine. I would like to draw attention to the overlap when looking at the mathematics test, where you will see that it will delineate between Algebra I, geometry, and it will delineate middle school, high school. This report should be paired with the fall NJSLA for grade nine students to show the complete picture, if you're looking for the entire picture of grade nine students. And I'd just like to draw attention, that slides 40 through 42, deal specifically with supports and interventions used to support our students who did not perform at grade level. complete picture, if you're looking for the entire picture of grade nine students. And I'd just like to draw attention, that slides 40 through 42, deal specifically with supports and interventions used to support our students who did not perform at grade level. Report three also contains the three sections. It'll have a district analysis, demographic analysis, and intervention strategies.
Thank you, Mr. Passerino. Got one more there. Please give us a brief overview of the 2022-2023 DLM test scores. If you could just tell everyone what the DLM stands for.
The Dynamic Learning Maps is an assessment for students who are, basically have the most significant cognitive disabilities and for whom general state assessments are not appropriate, even with accommodations. The DLM assessments are, offer these students a way to show what they know and how they can do it in English, language arts, as well as math and science.
Thank you very much. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
All right, very good, thank you. Curriculum agenda, Mr. Trebowiser.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President sitting in for Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowiser, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowiser, a second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Wolferman. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Boardan.
Yes.
Mr. De La Picha.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Finance and insurance, Mr. Trebowiser.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 15 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Trebowiser, I have a motion by Mr. Trebowiser, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Trebowiser, a second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Harris, I do have one, I just wanted to
Please.
Have Mr. Wolferman confirm that all these items that are on the disposable list, the district doesn't just take them and throw them away, they actually go through a process to make sure that we gain whatever kind of resources back that we can. So that way, we preserve as much of the taxpayers' money as possible in making sure we provide the best use of that capital.
Thank you, Mr. Trebowiser, I agree. Anybody else? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman. Before we do that, I just want to bring to Mr. Trebowiser's attention, I believe there are 16 items on the FNI.
Okay, 16 items.
Okay, thank you. So for the 16 items, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Boardan.
Yes.
Mr. De La Picha.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yep.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes. Thank you.
That 16th item was added late, and I want to thank the administration for that. Our representatives from School 20 and the district were invited down to Washington to receive their award for the National Blue Ribbon that was awarded to School 20 last month. So we're excited to do that, I don't know who's going, but enjoy yourselves in Washington. Next up, Buildings and Grounds agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator/Board Secretary's Office presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana, I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just want to commend the administration proactively taking care of the item number two, which is for the extension of one of our schools, so, great job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Wolferman. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Boardan.
Yes.
Mr. De La Picha.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes. Thank you.
Negotiations agenda, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Board of Education Committee for Negotiations presents the following one item, and I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Perez, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Ms. Boardan. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Wolferman. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Boardan.
Yes.
Mr. De La Picha.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Negotiations agenda, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Board of Education Committee for Negotiations presents the following one item, and I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Perez, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Nope, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Wolferman. Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Boardan.
Yes.
Mr. De La Picha.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the board? Saying none, is there any new business that should be brought before the attention of the board?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, Diwali is coming up, Festival of Lights, the food drive is going to be starting next week, I believe, and goes into November, and all the food donated will be given to We Feed Woodbridge. So anyone interested and would like to participate, please let us know, or at least let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may?
Of course.
Mr. Sedana, I did see a number of schools are also collecting food, so hopefully your school is participating. But I did want to give a little shout to the Guine Roaming Trust. For a few years, they've been generous enough to donate money to the PACE program and to RISE. They are dissolving that trust, and this year, they have informed us they will be donating $25,000 to the PACE program and $188,820 to the Matthew Jago School. And also, they are donating $20,000 to the RISE program. There's no mention of what it needs to be spent on or what it will be spent on at this point, but they just let us know. So we want to give a big thank you to them.
I agree. Thank you, Ms. Boardan, anybody else?
Mr. Harris?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, I'd like to give some information about our middle school teen centers. So parents and guardians of middle school students, please remember that the township provides three after-school teen centers around the township for safe, structured, and constructive recreational opportunities between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. on school days. The activities include homework help, video games, arts and craft, billiards, ping pong, foosball, and board games. The facilities are open to all middle school students residing in Woodbridge Township, and students can visit any of the three facilities. We have the Evergreen Center, Youth Center at 400 Inman Avenue in Colonia. We have the Highland Grove Youth Center, 70 Highland Terrace and Fords, and Acacia Youth Center, this is 95 Port Reading Avenue in Port Reading. If you have any questions, you can email the Township Youth Service Division at youthservices@twp.woodbridge nj.us. Or you can also text YOUTHSERVICES to 22828 to join the Youth Services mailing list. I also want to bring attention to that we are looking for, the school district is looking for substitute teachers. If you're interested, please visit ess.com to apply. You only need 30 college credits or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. De La Picha.
Just a couple of things. I'd like to thank the administration for adding the school resource officers. Last week was fire prevention week, so we were at the schools. They're definitely, you know, you notice them. And while we were at School 25, the school went into a lockdown, and the resource officer was excellent. You know, he was visible, you know, definitely well-involved. So on Tuesday, we went to Ford's Middle School, we had a student that was injured, and again, the school resource officer was out front, met the ambulance, was a great help. So I just want to thank the administration for going that route. I mean, there's a lot of positive things, I've heard nothing but good things from teachers and parents with them inside the schools, so just wanted to recognize them. Just to close out, just a friendly reminder to the residents that Mayor Max Cafe has reopened this school year. The cafe serves breakfast and lunch from 10:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon from Monday through Friday during the school year at the Cypress Center. It's located at 881 West Avenue in Port Reading, treehouse and a firehouse. This is a joint program, a joint township-school-district venture with the district's RISE Special Needs Adults, where the students learn job workforce skills. You don't have to, there's no reservations required, and takeout is available if you call 732-596-4165.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. De La Picha. Anybody else?
You know, Mr. President, I'm sorry, sorry, I have one more thing.
Okay.
Marie sort of reminded me, last night, there was a youth leadership council meeting at the Acacia Center. It was very well-attended, I think there was probably at least 60 kids there, finding out what the volunteer opportunities are around the district. If you were not able to make it, your child is still eligible to volunteer, and if you want to find out more about the opportunities, you can email woodbridgeylc@gmail.com or call 732-726-2690. There was probably 15 or so organizations that are looking for youth volunteers, and they're all definitely worth the time for your child to look into. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Boardan. I do have two items this evening. First off, want to thank Mr. Passerino, as always, he put together and led the charge on the Middlesex County Magnet School Open House, as we've come to call it. It's where Middlesex County's Magnet School Representatives, these are five high schools located throughout Middlesex County, they're public schools, that offer career majors in the traditional trades, used to be known as the Vocational Technical Schools. They come out to our school district to promote their career majors to our students, particularly our middle school students. So thank you, Mr. Passerino, for giving those students those opportunities to learn about alternatives, if they prefer to become a plumber, or an auto mechanic, or they're extremely strong in the STEM or biomedical sciences areas, those are alternatives to our three high schools. So thank you, Mr. Passerino. And I know the turnout was strong, you and I were both there. Dr. Massimino, they have a robust open house schedule, would it be possible if you could get that out to the middle school students, if we haven't done so already? Thank you. Next up, my last two items, Dr. Massimino, Ms. Boardan, Ms. Anderson, Mr. De La Picha, a number of us were at the ribbon cuttings for the new wings at School 25 and School 28. TV 35 was generously there, and they provided some aerial coverage, some background B-roll, as it's known, of this new, of these new facilities at School 25 and School 28, which was made possible through the referendum that voters of this township supported, taxpayers' support, as well as through pilot programs that afforded us these schools at no additional cost to the district, we simply have to run them. So a big thank you to the voters of this township, as well as the mayor and the council for affording us that new revenue that went to pay for those buildings. Those videos are on the TV 35 Woodbridge Channel's YouTube page, as well as through our district page as well, so check out those two ribbon cuttings, they're really great. A number of us were present for it. And that concludes, with the exception of one project, all of the projects under the $87 million March 2020 school referendum, that again, the public was so generously supportive of, in addition to the state of New Jersey, with the exception of School 4 and 5. As Mr. Sedana touched on this evening, that project continues to move along, and I know construction should be starting sometime next year. We're very excited to conclude that project with a major addition on School 4 and 5. We're very pleased with the outcome of the new wings at School 25 and School 28. I think he's out in the hallway. Mr. Paglia and his team had a watchful eye, along with Mr. Wolferman and Dr. Massimino, in getting those projects done on time and on budget for this school year. So thank you, gentlemen, for you and your team and your work. That concludes my remarks. Before we turn it over to the public, any other questions from the board members? Seeing none, we will now open the meeting for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Please come up to the microphone.
Hello, good evening, my name is, I don't know if you can hear me. My name is Lani Morales, and I'm from Avonale, New Jersey.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you? It's brought up to my attention, I was a busy mom for many years, working, actually now working this year, so I'm very involved in the school, my township school, School 4 and 5. It's brought to my attention, this is the first time I have a child in kindergarten in the district. And I find that 25 students to one teacher, it's insane. It's too many. I work in all the districts, I'm not going to mention the districts, and as a paraprofessional, and maybe we will have 20, 22 kids, and it will be a paraprofessional and a teacher. I get concerned because not just my child, my child is prepared, because obviously I work with her, and she was in a preschool that I had to pay for, but there's many kids that don't have that in our district. They don't have preschool before getting to kindergarten. So kindergarten is their first step stone into the school, so they don't have a routine, or they don't understand how a school day works, and teachers have to work with those kids more, and I just find it a little bit chaotic. I have a sister who lives in Colonia, she has a daughter in Claremont, she has the same situation, there's 25 kids in the classroom. So is there a way or a budget that we could work into putting maybe paras into kindergarten? I mean, before, we used to have half-days, so maybe this wasn't a situation that was needed for. I know as per state, you'll have to have 26 students, 26 students per classroom to have a para. But 25 is just one kid short.
Does that conclude your?
Yep.
I just have to ask this as part of process, to treat everybody fair. Thank you for being a caring parent and coming here. Dr. Massimino, could you speak to this?
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Morales. So this is a topic that we've been talking about for quite some time. I was a former elementary school principal, so I do know what it looks like to have full kindergarten classes. To be candid with you, and you know, if Mr. Passerino wants to jump in at the end, by all means, the biggest issue we've had is we start with the registration process very early on in the year. You know, it starts, you know, January, February, and rolls all the way through. I will be honest with you, the issue that we are struggling with across the board is there's, there has to be a cutoff, but at the same time, we also don't want to tell somebody who moves in across the street from the school that, okay, we hit our cutoff, and now you can't come in. So we are working with the schools, we're trying to look at some efforts to change how we do registration, to get it earlier, to get a better idea. I don't disagree with you, with fewer students going to preschool or having that experience, I'll call it, just prior to kindergarten, it does make it a little harder. I think post-pandemic, we're seeing that more now than ever. So it's certainly not something that we're not aware of. You know, Mr. Passerino and I were at an elementary school task force meeting, and this was a topic that we discussed with teachers, you know, we discussed with administrators to figure out, one, how we can do something on proactive side in terms of registration, where does that cutoff look like? What is our buffer in terms of if we cut the number to 18, you know, and we have students in a place like 4 and 5 with the apartment complex next door, that's a challenge, because we don't have any predictability as to when students are going to come in, and again, it becomes an issue for us transportation-wise to say, okay, you live right next door to the elementary school you'll go to for first grade, but we're going to put you on a bus and send you to the kindergarten school, which those parents then give us, obviously, pushback because they moved, where they moved so that their child would attend the school next door. So I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree that it can be a lot of work for the teacher to handle. On the flip side, I've heard from a number of parents who have complained because they do live in such close proximity to the school, and we've already exceeded the number, and I know I have parents that, I'd be the 26th kid, I live right next door. So it is something we're discussing actively. I don't disagree that it can be a lot of work for the teacher to handle. On the flip side, I've heard from a number of parents who have complained, because they do live in such close proximity to the school, and we've already exceeded the number, and I know I have parents that would, I'd be the 26th kid, I live right next door. So, it is something we're discussing actively. You know, I have this dialogue with Mr. Poserino on a weekly basis, because students are always registering in the district, and now that we've started the school year, those people that are moving in now and saying, I moved in next to a school, and you're telling me my child has to get on a bus and go to a school not next to my residence, yes, that's a conversation, that's the exact opposite of what we're having here. So, we're trying to find that happy medium. We are aware of it, it is something we are actively trying to figure out. Are there proactive measures? Are there some response measures we can take? Obviously, with so many classes that would have 25, hiring all the additional staff is also a concern. Right now, we're putting another body in the room. There is a budgetary concern that we have to pay attention to, because now they would be a full-day employee. You know, we don't have those employees, and we don't have full-day school aides, so to speak. We have paraprofessionals, which you're, you know, more than familiar with how that works, and then the accompanying benefit salaries that would go with that. So, there's a whole lot of things we're taking into consideration, but I absolutely hear what you're saying. It's something we talk about regularly, and that we're working to address.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It's very concerning, not just for me, but for the entire district, and I know 4 and 5 is overcrowded, because we have a new building, too. So, I totally understand, but at the same time, we're worried about everybody's safety.
No, absolutely. It is one of the things I'm hoping the construction at School 4 and 5 in the future will help to alleviate, but in the meantime, we're certainly looking at potential solutions.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. We have any other members of the public?
Good evening. Paul Lund, Hoplawn. In light of the previous concern, I do, and I think Vice President Harris had once addressed this, why the teacher shortage? What are some of the factors? That's one of the questions. I've spoken to teachers, being in education, some have said that there's a breakdown in discipline, there's a lot more behaviors going on. I even saw the leap year over year in violent incidents at our schools, up to 99 now. I heard from a colleague in Perth Amboy that they're not doing any lunchtime detentions, because, and I'm sure that's not going on here, but they said the superintendent gets a bonus when there are less disciplined referrals made, and it's like kind of a shady way to hide some of what would have been addressed as a discipline failure. And I just bring it up, because this is coming from people who are actually in teaching, that are counting down the days until they can retire. So, putting that aside, I do want to return to a familiar topic, and that's Policy 5756. We heard recently that there are now 32 school districts that have rescinded the policy. They embraced it openly at first, because Strauss ESME, who gives guidance to 500 active school districts, had claimed that it was mandatory. The Assistant Attorney General recently, in a court appearance, said that, no, it's not mandatory, that if you want, if you take it, you got to take it in whole, or if you rescind it, or say no to it, then you reject it wholly, and there's no danger of lawsuit. On the other side of that, Policy 5756 can also generate lawsuits from parents, and I'm going to read something which you might have heard, it's recent news, but lawsuit, Parent versus Cherry Hill, Policy 5756, subtitle, and a question I would ask, will the insurance cover this? New Jersey schools have been directing the social transition of students without parents' knowledge or permission under 5756. New Jersey seems to be out of touch with the law, because according to courts in Wisconsin, which of course is Wisconsin, it completely undermines parental authority when the school policy allows children to choose a new gender identity and begin the process of socially transitioning without the parent's consent. According to Wisconsin courts, and who knows, that may become something that happens in New Jersey courts, God willing. Parents have the right to make medical decisions for their children. Social transitioning is considered a medical transition. It's approved by the American Psychiatric Association, the gender-affirming model that started in Europe, and is now fading out of Europe, but is all the rage here in the States. That model is part of medical treatment. The next step would be puberty blockers. We have yet to see this challenge in a New Jersey court until now. Rick Short in Cherry Hill is suing on behalf of parents, even as the state attorney general continues to sue Hanover, Middletown, Manalpin, and Marlborough over new policies that will notify parents of any mental health issues, not singling out what the state calls a protected class, not singling out the transgender student, but for any mental health issue, any material impact on children, parents should know about. And you've heard this before, you can't give a child a Tylenol without notifying a parent, and yet you can set them on a path to social transitioning, which has all kinds of negative consequences, including if they go far enough, medical issues, suicidality increases actually post-affirmation. There's a lot of reasons to be concerned about that, and we've provided you by email, and some of the parents who've come here on our behalf, have provided you with email information about studies. And I'm hoping you have a time to look into this, because if there is a danger to the health of our students, we should know about it. My question comes down to this. 32 districts have stood on behalf of parental notification. Every study shows that getting parents involved is important for the child's welfare, leaving them in the dark on the possibility that they will be hostile. And by the way, I did go to a meeting in Freehold, the Mom and Superior Court meeting, and they did say that the claim that 1 in 10 parents would be violent toward their children, and 4 in 10 parents would be hostile toward the child coming out, that that was purely speculative based on student surveys. So, if the student is asked, what would your parents say if you transitioned? If they say something like, oh, they'd kill me, that would count toward this survey that the state was using as a premise. The judge even called it speculative. Thank you for giving me that extra time, I appreciate it.
Yes. Wanted you to finish your sentence there. Well, thanks for being here, as always. You asked, your first question was, why is there a teacher shortage? I forget a number of the reasons, but clearly, it's a problem of more retiring than entering the workforce. As you know, I work for the state of New Jersey. We've passed a number of bills, and the Department of Education's worked on a number of things to encourage more high school and college students to get into the profession. I think that's our number-one way to restock the pond, for lack of a better term, but the reasons for retiring, I couldn't necessarily speak to, but I'm sure they're plentiful, whether it's, you know, money, moving to a warmer climate. There were obviously some students, it's not, it's no secret, that coming out of the pandemic, some students lost some of the social skills, or perhaps how to behave in school, which I'm sure has not necessarily contributed to a warm and fuzzy environment in every instance. But I, from what I hear, I talk to our faculty and staff all the time, since we've come out of the pandemic, what I've heard anecdotally is that there's been an improvement, and you know, student behavior is starting to, they're starting to re-transition back into, you know, the structured, more respectful environment of a school versus perhaps what they could get away with at home, when they could push their parental boundaries, as you may put it. And then, you know, I take, well, I'm not going to get into, you know, some of the studies or case law that you referenced from out of state, or I don't know what studies you were necessarily responding to. We do have that policy on the books. The Policy and Planning Committee has not discussed any kind of repeal or deviation from that policy. And then, last but not least, Mr. Bush was kind enough back in the winter, I guess it was, when yourself and other members of the public were bringing this issue to greater attention, to our attention. We sat down with Mr. Bush, and Mr. Bush walked us through some of the case law and guidance from the Attorney General's Office, Department of Education, where I don't want to say the Attorney General's Office necessarily, it's Department of Education. But what we discussed was, the number-one thing that guidance counselors do, let's say at the middle school, the high school level, is encourage, the number-one thing that they do is encourage a facilitation of a conversation between a student who's having any kind of issue, whether it's questioning or transitioning. The number-one thing that our school counselors do is facilitate a conversation, and only in the instances, and Mr. Bush, correct me if I'm wrong, is if the student represents with some level of credibility or evidence that their health and safety is somehow could be violated by their parent, or their guardian, or a stepparent, or what have you, those are the instances where our school district will act in the best interest of the child. And that's law that was supported on a bipartisan basis, and that's our responsibility as a school district. You get on our bus, or you get off our bus, everywhere in between, we are acting in the best interest of the child, and if there's suggestions that a student could be abused, harmed, or killed by a parent for, you know, being gay, or lesbian, or transgender, we will protect that student in those instances where those students represent, and we have evidence that their personal safety is in danger. Otherwise, as Mr. Bush has represented to us, that the number-one thing our district does is facilitate a conversation. Mr. Bush, could you speak to anything? Did I say anything wrong there, or could you expand on it?
You said evidence, and I want to know if child's testimony is sufficient evidence.
Well, okay, so I'm just going to respond, I'm not going to respond to everything necessarily, Mr. Lund, but we're obviously having an ongoing dialogue on this issue, and the district's trying to do everything it can to just figure out where the state of the law is on this, and obviously, that's my responsibility to some degree, as, not to all degree, I guess, giving the right advice at least. But one of the things that is interesting, and I think it's important, and I know you're now telling us that you're going to different board meetings around the state, right, and I certainly appreciate your advocacy, Zell's advocacy on this and every other issue that you feel passionate about, but, you know, I think it's important to note the history, and I think I shared this with the committee at the time, and I don't know where the board's transgender policy, I'm not looking at the manual right now, I was trying to find the PDF. It's hard to search for things the way you can on a computer, on your phone, but I'll just say to you that the reason that so many districts initially adopted a transgender policy, which seemed a little different at the time, in the sense that transgender is a protected class, as you acknowledge, under the law against discrimination, as are other, many other categories. I've said before that New Jersey has the most categories of any state in the nation, way more than Wisconsin, by the way. But the idea here is that when you look up the transgender policy, when it was adopted originally, and mostly because, it seems, that Strauss ESME, who's the company that you referred to, which I think has like 80%, maybe more, of the school districts in New Jersey, not Woodbridge. You guys use the School Boards Association, which is the other company. I think there's a third one, too. I don't know of any of our firms, 83 school districts, that uses the other one, but it's one of the two, and typically not School Boards Association, which this board uses. They usually use Strauss ESME. So, when Strauss ESME, I'll share this with the board, too, so you all understand the issue. When Strauss ESME, so when, why did Strauss ESME issue a policy? It wasn't required by law. Why, you know, obviously, you have to protect a transgender staff member, child, the way you would have to protect a Jewish, black, Latino, any other protected class, obviously, in the same way. But why did they do that? And the reason, it seems, without having a conversation with them, that they did this was because, at the time, the hot issue for principals, school administrators, administration was locker rooms, bathrooms, that was the issue. And it was very difficult five to 10 years ago or so, when this first came out, I don't remember the exact year that they were first adopted, but it was controversial enough that when it first came out, Garden State Equality, which is well-regarded as one of the leading advocacy organizations for LGBTQ+ rights in the state of New Jersey, sent letters to all of the districts who pursuant to the guidance from Strauss ESME adopted that policy, saying something along the lines of, and please don't quote me, but something along the lines of, we see that you did this, in most cases, you did it because you were trying to be respectful, we know that was your intention, but just so you know, what you've done is discriminatory, and please repeal it at the first possible opportunity, or we're going to be forced to take you to state and federal court, okay? In violation of the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution, which offers even more protection than the U.S. Constitution here in New Jersey. Okay, so this happened, school districts freaked out, you know, we got like 10 calls in the same day at the time, whenever this was, and we started working it through. Garden State Equality didn't have a problem with the policy itself, they had a problem with some of the wording in the policy. It sounds like Strauss ESME was sort of ahead of the curve on this. But again, this was not designed the way I think you've described, the initial aspect of this. It's important to understand the history, I think, especially for someone like you who's as interested in this as it appears you are. The idea was always to help school administrators figure out the locker room and the bathroom issue, because they needed something to rely on when they spoke to parents who may have been concerned on either whether their child was transgender, or whether their child wasn't, and wanted to understand how a child who was transgender was able to use the restroom of the sex with which they identify. So, I just want to explain that to you, because I think it's important to understand how this came about. You know, that's the reason that there's transgender policies, and there isn't, you know, there aren't other specific policies necessarily just for the protected class of others, if that makes sense.
Got it. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Lund.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
John Vitarewicz, I guess it's me again. I want to just go back about the, Dr. Harris, Dr. Massimino, Mr. Harris, talk about the, we do this, we do this, psychology, it's not a problem of mine sons, but what happened was, we say, we, why can't we, the parents, be involved in it? Every time child gets in problem, bring the parent, and then you talk to the psychology psychologist, whatever you call it, and let the parents be involved to know what was the kid charged for, did they see anything happening, I made aware of it. They could help if what happens. Those people I'm not aware of, maybe, and if something you got a parent that's helpless, you can have a mother, single mother, or even guardian, or something like that, but if you can do all those things with hiring all those new people, which is a great thing about it, you're not going to solve the problem as long as the parents are not involved, or guardian of those kids. They're going to be aware of it if they've gone to school. They should be aware of the drink, they just don't drink in school, they drink at home. All those things they do, more likely, they just do come to school. They might come to show off, maybe they have a psychological problem, something like that, but it's happening someplace else, at home, or anyplace else, and it'll take more time. But unless the council meeting on October 10th, I think you talk about the new schools, new classrooms, Mayor McCormick should make sure that's what he's doing. We also have for 20 years, you're overbuilding, you never catch up with those schools, by the time those schools are built, some of those kids go back to middle school already, by the time they get to high school, it's too late. That's where you got a problem, much where the kids get into the high schools. Before the high school, they're not ready to go to high school, because the schools are overcrowded, there's no discipline in the school, there's all kinds of stuff that's going on. But what we can do now is this, looking at Wall Street Journal, how many people will take their kids out of our schools, and put them in charter schools, or parochial schools? The problem is they cannot afford it. They do it not because the teachers are no good, teachers are great, schools are good, they know what the problem is, it's overcrowded. The schools are overcrowded, teachers cannot handle overwhelming of the students. Most important, we all know the number-one problem you got here, a lot of those kids are not speaking English. Teacher can talk, they're head-offs, and as the kids, anybody's question, because teachers, I mean, kids don't understand what it was all about, because this school, that doesn't be ready for the fifth grade, sixth grade, or whatever you call it. And this is all because of the influx of the people. That's where we got a problem. Now, tell me, there's no way it can be a school to keep them come, but it's too late. They put a horse, I mean, wagon before the horse. Now, I feel sorry for teachers, because the reason they have a teachers over here, because they just, they're overwhelmed, they can't do the work, and they tell you, if they don't feel good about what they're doing, that's it, because what they're doing is they cannot, you know, solve the problem, and that's a problem. So, you just put them, none of those kids are suspended, or stay back, they'll put advance, 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 by the time they get to high school, out of a high school, what can you go with it? You're not educated. That's what I'm saying. When we went to school years ago back, you tell your kids, listen to the kids, listen to the teacher, teacher is the boss, whatever teacher says, it goes. And if I hear something, you're going to get it when you get home. Now, kids come from school, and I hear it quite often, and why do you come from school? Well, grandma, am I a boy or a girl? That's what they talk about. Boys come from school, what are you watching? Well, I'm watching the films. Well, what's nothing? What are you watching the films? Grandma, what's a puberty? That's what you teach in schools. You should teach them read, and write, and math, things like that, never mind those things, it's not, this should be done to you, it should be done anyplace else, but not the schools, where you got to teach them to be educated, not about the sex, not about the gender, not everything like, because state says so, if state says so, why does the older school don't do it? Why do the parochial school don't do it? Why do the public school do it? And I'd be really offended, and I said to before, you are playing with a diamond. Those people from foreign countries, they don't teach this in foreign countries, they're not allowed even bring it to a certain age, to anything. And those people will rebel, because those people are here already, and the kids are here. So, stay out of it. Why do you fail all those new schools, all those new classrooms, why does education falling down? So, this is what we do. You job is, you're great people, the problem is, I don't know who's running the school or makes the decision, building's not going to do, audit is not going to do, only thing you do get educated, and you're not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitarek. Do we have any other members?
I just want to respond to a couple of items you said, Mr. Vitarek. Anytime a student is disciplined, especially for any kind of controlled substance, a parent is always contacted. It's when you say "we," "we" includes the parent. We can't discipline a student, we can't send a student out for a drug screen without making contact with the parent. That's absolutely a conversation we have, so I don't know.
No, no.
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish.
Mr. Vitarek.
You talked over your time limit. You were more than courteous, I'm going to speak uninterrupted, okay? Anytime a student is disciplined, especially for any kind of controlled substance, a parent is always contacted. It's when you say we, we includes the parent. We can't discipline a student, we can't send a student out for a drug screen without making contact with the parent. That's absolutely a conversation we have. So I, I don't know.
No, no.
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish.
Mr. Vertaric.
You talked over your time limit.
Yeah.
You were more than courteous. I'm going to speak uninterrupted, okay, sir? When we have an issue with discipline or substance abuse, we absolutely contact the parent. So when you said, when you started with the we, 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 why don't we involve the parents? When it is an issue, we absolutely involve the parents. We absolutely involve the parents. We don't involve, involve the parents in the educational component because it's during the school day and we educate students. Any parent that would like to reach out and have a conversation about their child with the counselor or administrator is welcome to do so. They have a parent portal, they have all of the information regarding their student at the touch of a button. So access is easier than it ever has been. We have things published in terms of how to email them, how to call them, how to get in contact, set up a meeting. But when there is a discipline issue, and I, and I do want to go back to, you're mentioning things of violence or substance abuse, we have 14,000 students, right? We almost have, almost 1,000 students per grade level. So if you took just a middle school and a high school, you're looking at 7,000 students. When you, when you put it in that context and say, okay, and I, and I'm not saying any high number is acceptable, right? We don't want anything above zero. But the reality is we're going to have that. When you say 81 incidents of substance abuse among roughly 7,000 middle school and high school students over the course of 180 days of school, I do think we are getting our message out. I do think the students are hearing what we're saying. I do think all the programs that Mr. Harris spoke to, in addition to all of the resources and personnel we've put into the schools, are having a positive impact. The reality is we, we don't go into everybody's home. We don't. We go into school and the students come to us. So when you say we, I want to clarify that because it's misleading how you opened your statement, it has to include the parents. It most certainly involves the parents. But we don't teach the parents, we teach the students. So while we can control the conversation that happens with the students and we can facilitate a conversation with the parents, at the end of the day, students go home and we can't control what conversations happens with the parents of their children when they're home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Masamino. That was very good. Are there any other members of the public?
Good evening. My name is Asutos Patel.
Oh, a second. Could you turn up the volume?
Colonia, can you hear, can you hear me now?
He's turning it up now.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Asutos Patel from Colonia. The reason for myself to be here tonight is I wanted to find out, is there a possible way, the school transportation, the way it's, the system is working right now, I have two kids that actually goes in, I know the two mile rule that we have right now. I've been trying to work with the township for the last about two years. I wanted to see if there's any possible way they can provide the transportation for my kids. The way the, because where I'm located at right now, it's, it's a very busy street, you know, and it's about 1.6 miles away from the location. But I mean, there's half of the towns that there's, if you go in and evaluate, you know, there's times that there's no walkways, you know, it's a, it's a busy street from, from morning to, to the afternoon time, from going in, and there's like a, the, the crossguard is not even there, you know, for the certain streets that we actually go into. So I had kind of put in a couple of times the requests to see if they can evaluate for that or not. I, I am more than willing to pay, you know, if there's any subscriptions that I have to go through, or if there's any even available seats that's there for the schools, for the buses. I mean, I see every day that there's schools that's actually the buses are passing through right from the house that I'm located in. There are a couple of incidents that have happened already, you know, in past in 2019, which I'm sure that the districts already know about it, you know, with the, the two, two brothers that have happened. And this is a similar concern that I'm actually bringing it into, to see if they can actually kind of look into this again and see, evaluate, or try to even come up with a plan for even the future parents that's actually going to be there. I mean, there's another community that's actually developing and right behind my corner. You know, I don't know whether there's going to be kids involved in there or not, I have no clue. But I mean, we are working parents from 6:30 in the morning to, you know, 5 o'clock, 7 o'clock at night. There's no way I can drop off my six-year-old 6 o'clock in the morning to some type of locations where they're able to go ahead and provide the buses, you know, from there to the locations. But I mean, they cannot provide from my house to, to the, to the, to the school just because I'm a .5 mile away or 1.5 mile away. So that's, that's one of the concerns that I actually have tonight.
Sure. Does that conclude your questions? I just have to ask that.
Yes.
Nothing to be disrespectful about. You and I had a brief conversation yesterday.
Yes.
I reached out to Mr. Sinelli today. He provided me a couple, two emails in a row.
Sure.
In response to those, I'll, let's talk afterwards, I'll kick you the response to those specific questions.
Okay.
As you and I have gone back and forth.
Right.
With you, with your friend, Dvang, over previous years, the answers are unfavorable, they're, they're the same answers as previous years, unfortunately. Dr. Masamino, Mr. Wolferman, and our transportation resident expert, Mr. Tree Wuster, can, can you speak perhaps to, to Mr. Patel as well as the public at large relative to the, the issue with subscription busing and, and the, just, just, just some background on it? Could, could either of you three speak to that if possible?
Okay. So, Mr. Patel, subscription busing is a very simple, complicated situation. So if you put in subscription busing, in essence, then you're going to eliminate all of the hazardous routes within the district, which would be advantageous to the district, but certainly would not be advantageous to people that are, let's say, crossing a divided four-lane highway, let's say Route 109 where they have to cross. That's considered a hazardous area. There are certain parts in the town that are hazardous. Most of Woodbridge Township does not have sidewalks. What stipulates the amount of distance is the state. It's under 18A391, and that's referenced in 6A272, I think it is, or 271. And that identifies the actual distance. It's two miles up to eighth grade and then it's two and a half miles for high school. For what it's worth, a very small portion of Colonia has sidewalks. I understand your situation of working at 6:00 in the morning, I leave my house at 5:00. So I certainly understand the dilemmas that cause. Now, my children are all older, but when they were your children's age, I was leaving my house at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning. There is not really a whole lot of latitude that the district has unless where you live, which if you want to discuss it with me later, I'd be more than happy to.
Sure, I could, I could do that.
But based on where you live will determine on how your children get to or from school. Now, the district isn't saying that your children have to walk or ride a bicycle or anything else. But the, the description on what constitutes a transported or non-transported area is explicitly clear. And there are literally places in this town and other towns throughout the state that one house is nine tenths of a mile and the other one is 2.1 tenths of a mile. And the person who's 2.1 gets the bus and the person who's 1.9 doesn't. Because in, in these types of situations, there's a specific cutoff. And then what differentiates the ability for the administration to say that you're, we're going to make that exception for you, but the person who is 1.59 tenths of a mile less from the distance doesn't get the bus. I mean, at some point, there's a specific cutoff. Now, your point about subscription busing, if they eliminate the hazardous routes, then all of the students that are eligible for free and reduced price lunch, which is usually the qualifying factor, they would be given seats on the bus prior to everyone else. The district has a finite amount of capacity and pretty much, if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Sinelli has done an outstanding job, and that is reflected in the, the state report, that the buses are pretty much at the standard of 150% capacity throughout the day. So that means there are not a whole lot of excess capacity available on our buses. Now, there may be a little here and a little there. It really is, it's not worth the amount of administrative function that is required to be able to put in a subscription busing. And that's why it's not been done. When I was in charge of transportation here, we looked at it many, many times over my 17 year tenure, and it never came out where it was going to provide the need for the community that the community was looking for.
Okay. All right. I mean, I'll, I can talk to you after.
I'd be happy.
That's not a problem. And we can just go ahead and discuss it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Saying none? Is there a need for closed session? No, I don't need to read that part. The chair will entertain a motion.
A motion.
Second. Motion by myself, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.